I don't know. It's very difficult at all. That's why I don't have a phone line. You can get the feed right off your own blind. They're planted in the house. They get three or four inches deep. Put them up in the garden.
Okay, folks. We'll call this public hearing to order. Thank you all for coming. I think you know the three board members. I'll introduce Cam Ferrante to those who don't know him. He's our municipal attorney. A couple of comments. First of all, there was an ad in the shopping guide that appeared that it might be a town ad. It was not a town ad. Okay? It had the very appearance, however, of the ads that we place. It had some subjective comments about things. That did not come from us. In terms of the meeting here, please no side conversations. It's very difficult to hear. Sometimes they're picked up on the microphone and it makes it hard for people out in another world to hear. If you want to talk and have a conversation, please go out of the room and further than right outside the door because we can still hear you right outside the door. I would ask that anybody that wants to speak, come up and stand in the middle so we can pick up your voice on this microphone and state your name and the town that you're from. And with that, we are going to start with the Silver Therapeutics hearing. Again, as I stated, as we stated in the ad that we did put in the paper, this is for us to gain input from the public about what they think should or shouldn't be, general comments. But if anybody starts throwing any spears, then we're going to shut you down. So is anybody here from Silver Therapeutics? Hi. Can you give us a one-minute synopsis of what it is you're proposing?
Good evening, folks. As you know, my name is Zach Bramline. I represent Silver Therapeutics.
Can they turn around so we can hear them?
I'm happy to speak. I'm happy to speak up. I just want to make sure that I speak into this recording device here because I believe this is being broadcast. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can move that forward.
Move the whole chair forward. Yeah. And you can turn around.
Do you mind if I turn my back?
No, not at all.
It's not allowed.
It's what we say.
Good evening, folks. As you know, my name is Zach Bramline. I'm cast for the African Silver Therapeutics. I'm here with Josh Ferranto, who is one of the owners and manager members of Silver Therapeutics. Happy to address any of the questions that are raised tonight, any of the select board's questions. Our application is on file with the town. It addresses all of the performance standards that are in the town's ordinance about ventilation, loitering, security, and traffic control. So happy to speak to any of that. I'm going to let Josh introduce himself and speak briefly as well.
Thanks, Zach. Hi. Yeah, I'm Josh Ferranto. I'm from Silver Therapeutics. We operate two stores in Maine currently. We have one in Berwick and one in Portland. We've been operating in those towns for at least years. We have a great relationship with those towns. We do a lot of community outreach. We hire locally. We're really excited to hopefully operate in this town. We plan to be a part of the community, you know, hire within the town, make a beautiful store in that historic building that we're into. Yeah, we just want to be a part of this town. It's going to be, you know, a very secure, welcoming store. And yeah, we just look forward to being here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anybody from this side have any comments? Or shall we open it up? Okay. Anybody have any comments?
I do.
All right.
Hi, I'm Walter. I live down there on North Road here in Parsons Field.
Walter, could you give us your full name? I'm sorry.
Sure. It's Walter Schott.
Thank you.
And again, I live on North Road, just down the road. So it pains me a little bit to say this, but I urge the board of selectmen to just approve their license because they have jumped through the oops that we as a town voted on and accepted back whenever we accepted it. For that reason, the board of selectmen, I urge you to just allow them to open because they followed all the rules. Having said that, I think this particular applicant has not acted in good faith. Their behavior through this entire process kind of angers me. Rather than standing on their own position, they have attacked one of the other applicants. It's just not cool. So again, personally, I would like to see them not exist. I hope we as a town decide if they do get their license, we don't give them any money. However, they follow the rules we set. You guys should just give them their license. So that's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Walter. Anyone else? Okay, you're next, Cliff. No, come on up. Come on up. No.
Hi, Tom Winter. I live just down the road here, actually that way into the woods. Two questions, really. One, is there any foreseeable plans that you would want to expand into cultivating and processing? And also, how many employees do you expect to hire from the local area?
Yeah, I can answer that. We have no plans on cultivating in town. And generally, a store of that size will have six to seven employees.
Part-time?
Part and full-time.
Part and full-time. Thank you.
Cliff Krolak, resident of Parsons Field.
Come up and speak into the speaker, Cliff.
I only heard the word ventilation mentioned once. Could you explain why we need ventilation if you're not growing or producing?
Yeah. In Maine, everything is prepackaged. So I think that ventilation applies more to the cultivation side of this business. So I mean, we will have air purifiers, but it's essentially non-existent in a retail capacity.
I live in Parsons Field. We live on Garner Avenue. And I have no objections to a medical marijuana facility. It helps a lot of people. At least, you don't get the smell. We live on a road that the smell is so bad at times, you can't sleep at night. And house permeates with marijuana smell. And that's not fair to us. If you choose to open your store there, I don't have a problem. That is for medical purposes and it helps people.
Okay. Yeah, if we can clarify, this is not a medical facility. This is an adult-use.
I thought this was medical.
No. No, the town does not get involved with medical marijuana.
I will say that we are an adult-use store. However, the difference between adult use and medical is that all the adult-use products are tested for potency, for pesticides. Everything's labeled, tracked, and traced. So I would say a large majority of our current clientele is coming in for medical purposes because in some ways it can be superior because you got better idea of what you're getting.
I need to stand up again?
Yeah, please.
I have a question because that's what I thought this was, is for medical. You're not the same gentleman that is here and presented it to the Parsons Field residents?
We've never applied for any medical store or operations.
Who is that gentleman? He just was not.
That's the water. The water facility. That's a different company altogether.
Oh, okay. Okay. So you're going to sell anyway, but you're not going to produce our property?
Nope. We're just, everything we bring in is prepackaged and then it's sold within our store.
Guaranteed?
Hundred percent. No production whatsoever on the property or in the town.
I'm finished.
Okay. Other comments? Yeah, Dick.
My name's Dick Waldron. I live on Elm Street. My understanding is in the facilities that these gentlemen have, they have a good standing in every community.
Ed.
Just a couple of questions. Exactly where is this marijuana being, going to be grown and who's doing it? And do they make the employees sign a nondisclosure statement about what pesticides and whatnot are used?
Ed, could you just say your name?
Edward Briggs.
Thank you.
So we work with about 30 or 40 different purveyors throughout the state. Everything's grown in the state. And, you know, we personally don't have anyone sign a nondisclosure or an NDA. I haven't heard of that. Because we're in the adult-use market, there's a very short list of what we can use on the plants. And so in terms of pesticides, it's, anything we can use is pretty benign, all, you know, it's been approved. So it's not nothing that's, no ban chemicals or pesticides of any sort. It's all, it's all regulated by the state.
Yes. That's you, John.
I'm John Wesco. I live in Parsons Field. Just one question. Is there going to be on-premises use of what you sell?
No, not at all. It's not allowed by the state. And even if it was, it's of no interest to us. And I will go back to, with medical cannabis, there's no testing and they can use any pesticide or there's no testing for whatever pesticides. It's a whole different product. Yeah.
Yep. Jeff.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Wright. I'm on 706 North Road, right on Route 160. I'm not here to throw any spears, but the ad in the shopper's guide said in good standing. Is the board aware of four violations from Silver Therapeutics, October 2nd, 2024?
At this point, I don't know.
Is anybody aware of any violations that's from Silver Therapeutics? No? How about the mountains? Do you know anything about the violations?
Violations?
Yes.
What kind of violations?
Hold on. Give me the speed reader.
Second. Our licensing application.
Well, I'm surprised that nobody's researched this.
Do you have a copy of that?
You got it from the state.
Jeff, you want a copy?
I actually don't. I've read that.
Yeah, mine are four violations, right? But it said in the shopper's guide, good standing. And I'm not here to throw any spears because God knows I've thrown it up already.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. I just have to, I have to do a little research myself.
Thank you for the copy of that.
Okay.
I'm happy to address that. We.
Shouldn't have addressed it earlier.
I'm in, I'm in good standing with the state. And I mean, it was, you know.
With the patient. With the last patient.
Yeah. At our cultivation facility, we had an employee that was improperly handling his testing procedure. The state came in, gave us guidance. We corrected the issue. It's very common, you know, almost every cultivation in this state, once in a while runs into an issue and we corrected it. Haven't had a problem since, but yeah, so that's all I can say.
If I may just. The notice of administrative action here is directed to Silver Therapeutics Cultivation, which holds a cultivation license, which is not the applicant before the town today. The applicant before the town today is Silver Therapeutics of South Portland. And that is for a retail-only license, so it's a very different thing. I understand the point being raised, but so this is why it's not in the application package, because it's not required. That is not the applicant before the town today. I'm happy to hand this back over.
Any others? Yeah.
I have another question. This is, I'm really serious about because it's reported now from different news outlets that some of the cartels now coming in and buying up these companies or these gold places to Americans and the American discuss to be growing it. Do you know for sure that your growth is American grown and not somebody else coming in and putting things in it that shouldn't be?
Yeah. As far as I know, I haven't heard of any of that activity in the adult-use space of cannabis in Maine. It's all been within the medical or just completely illegal. And the adult-use market is highly regulated. As I haven't heard of any, any foreign influence. It's all, you know, grown in the state by people that are licensed in the state. And it's a very stringent program. So that, I read about that. I saw that. It's not, it has nothing to do with the adult-use cannabis program in Maine, which we're part of.
Anyone else? We'll leave the floor open for a little while here. Oh, yes.
I'm Trudy Duffey. And I'm with EnPorter Maine. I have a series of questions.
Okay. Can I ask you to step over a little closer to our microphone? Thank you.
What are you selling that's packaged? Are you selling weed? Are you selling gummies? What's the range of what you are selling?
Sure. Yeah, it's all the above. We're selling flour, which is weed, gummies, chocolates, vape cartridges, tinctures, like solves. Yeah, it's the whole suite of products that a typical store would sell that are cannabis-infused.
Thank you. What's the nearest outlet for similar kinds of products to this?
As far as I know, at least on the border of Maine, there's Lebanon and then Richland, I think are the two closest going north-south. And then east, I think Hollis maybe, Wyndham as well.
What about Limerick? I heard there were four outlets in Limerick.
Limerick is medical, as far as I know.
All four of that sites are?
Yeah, that's a whole different program.
Four sites of medical marijuana in Limerick?
Yeah.
I'm surprised there are that many. Are you surprised?
Yeah.
That would seem a lot in one small town. And they sell nothing but marijuana, medical?
Yeah, through the medical program, yeah.
You had a list. I don't know whether I got the right ad or not.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I don't know who did this ad.
I'm not sure. It was not the town, I will tell you that.
Okay.
I don't know. That's the ad that I was referring to at the beginning.
Okay. It says that it's a retail store for cultivation, manufacturing, and should you explain those? Where is testing going to be done and what kind of testing?
I'm sorry. Happy to answer that.
Okay. I'm not against it.
No, 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 yeah.
I don't have the.
That's fair. I don't believe that Josh or I have seen the ad that's circulated in town that you mentioned. And so you had to take a look at it.
Where it comes from, then?
Yeah, sure. I don't know. I can't answer that right off the top of my head, but. But what I can tell you is I can answer your question.
Okay.
The only thing that Silver Therapeutics is seeking tonight is a retail license. So there's no cultivation, there's no manufacturing of product at the location in town.
Okay. So this is misleading.
I don't know that it's misleading, but I can tell you again that it's only retail.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. What's the extent of partners? Because here it says that if, that two of you are connected to other established Maine retail cannabis businesses and in addition to several other across New England. What, could you tell me about that?
So again, I'm happy to answer that. The only entity that's applying for a license tonight is Silver Therapeutics of South Portland. It's only for the retail license. There are other Silver Therapeutics companies that are separate and apart from this entity and that operate and hold licenses in different towns. You heard mention of Silver Ther-, Silver Therapeutics, excuse me, cultivation. There are other Silver Therapeutics retail entities. There is no, there's no corporate ownership between Silver Therapeutics of South Portland, the applicant tonight, and those other entities. Josh has a number of partners that were disclosed in the application and I'm happy to share a copy of that with you. I'm sure Josh can mention his partners by name and describe them if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. There's Adam Carafano, who was out here tonight, and then Brendan McKee and Josh Silver. I've been working with them for a number of years. And yeah, we work well together and that's, that's the partnership.
It's not the two brothers.
No.
I don't know why.
You're referring to my.
I had it in my head.
They own the building that these folks want to be.
Okay. Now I understand. Okay. All right. What about the, are there plans for the apartments above that store?
I don't know.
That's a separate question.
Yeah. Could you answer that?
No, I don't think there are any formal plans at this point.
All right.
But that's another, a whole nother planning board issue.
Beautiful place for them, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. So there may be people living up there, above the shop? There may be.
I wouldn't know.
Okay. I mean, I think that's certainly a big consideration is what's going in above the shop where there's going to be even a carefully orchestrated shop. You want business, right? So you're going to have people coming and going all that time. And it's going to be busy there. I was wondering about parking.
Yeah, we're leasing multiple spaces behind the building, so we have ample parking.
Okay. And the mill is going to be changed into residences, right?
Again, I'm not sure. I'm just leasing this one part of this building, so.
I see some nods. And where will the people in the mill park?
Well, really, that's.
It does.
I understand it's an important question, but.
It's not a single place. It's a, it's a complex at this point, I would think.
Correct. But I think what you're referring to are things that are many, at least months, if not years, in the future. And a whole lot can change.
All right.
So I think the answers you get tonight would not be, would potentially not be the same when it came to fruition.
All right. Okay. Let's see if there's anything else. Your hours?
Ten to eight, Monday through Saturday, closing on Sunday.
All right. I have a better idea. I'm not against people smoking. I'm not against marijuana. But I know that it's going to bring a lot of traffic into that area. Most of the places that I know of, similar to yours, are in a place with, that are more, more accessible for people to drive in, park, and buy and leave. And so it's, it's the center of town. So those are my main questions. Thank you.
I'm happy to address the traffic question, if you'd like, ma'am.
Okay, please.
So as prerequisite for coming before the select board tonight, Silver Therapeutics and other applicants had to obtain a conditional use permit from the town planning board back in May. Part of that conditional use permit was a review of the sufficiency of the parking and the traffic and the vehicular access and egress to the site. And so that was sort of dealt with at the planning board level. But if you have questions, I would encourage you to look at Silver Therapeutics' operations plan, which is on file with our application. It addresses traffic and parking, which is a requirement, a performance standard under the town's licensing ordinance. And there's a whole long, sort of more than half a page addressing that, and I won't recap it all, but it's, it was dealt with at the planning board level and it's sort of recapped again in our operations plan. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
Maybe I didn't do my homework, but when someone mentioned that there's four different companies under the names Silver Therapeutics, and this particular company has no relationship with the other four, I, my understanding, if you're a corporation, you can't have the same name as an other company.
They're, they're not the same names, exactly. There's no corporate ownership between the companies. There is a, there are common investors and owners of the different companies. The different companies hold different licenses in different locations. But Silver Therapeutics of South Portland, the applicant tonight, is not owned or operated by any of those other companies, nor does it own or operate any of those other companies.
So you're saying that Silver Therapeutics of Keys of Falls has no relationship with the other three, legal or otherwise?
They are, they are in common, there's a, it's a family of companies. They're owned by the same investors in each.
So are these franchises?
No. They're separate, they are separate companies.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Snow. I represent 04, 04047 LLC, which has also applied for a cannabis retail store license. This public hearing does not address that application. However, I have some real concerns and I've written a letter to the select board with those concerns. The first concern, maybe not the foremost concern, but what I'm hearing here tonight is not exactly accurate. So the ownership structure, and if you look at Silver Therapeutics of South Portland LLC, you look at the operating agreement, it's owned by Silver Therapeutics of Maine. So the owner is Silver Therapeutics of Maine, which also owns some of these other Silver Therapeutics stores. There's also Silver Therapeutic Inc., which owns Silver Therapeutics, as well as other Silver Therapeutic companies in other states. So there is a relationship among these various entities. So it's, it's a bit, not quite truthful in the way that this is being represented. This is not a Maine company. Two of the owners live outside of Maine. Two of the owners do live inside of Maine. But all the owners do not live within Maine. So that is the first thing that I would like to address. The second thing is that this ad. That ran. In the weekly shopper, that looks exactly like an ad. That this board. Would put out, attacked my client, 04047. And it was completely untruthful. I don't know who ran that ad, although I have a very good idea of who ran that ad. It, it represented that my client is going, is wanting to cultivate in the space that's near where Silver wants to put in a store. My client has applied to cultivate, has applied to manufacture, and has applied for a testing facility. That is not true. My client has applied for a cannabis retail store. Way back in the very beginning of this whole process, my client did put in an application for a site plan review that listed those uses. That has long since not been the case. It did happen at a couple of planning board meetings where the agenda listed that, that the conditional use application was for those uses. I corrected that immediately. It went into the record. So that, it's completely false. That the attack on my client, I think it shows poor character. And whether it came from Silver or whether it came from the landlords, which is where I believe it probably originated, it shows poor character. Finally, and a matter of character, and Josh mentioned being, or one, I don't remember who mentioned, but being close to the border. If you look at the Silver Therapeutics Inc. website, it lists the stores where Silver Therapeutic Inc. It did happen at a couple of planning board meetings where the agenda listed that, that the, the, the conditional use application was for those uses. I corrected that immediately. It went into the record. So that, it, it's completely false. That the attack on my client, I think it shows poor character. And whether it came from Silver, or whether it came from the landlords, which is where I believe it probably originated, it shows poor character. Finally, and a matter of character, and, and Josh mentioned being, or one, I don't remember who mentioned, but being close to the border. If you look at the Silver Therapeutics Inc. website, it lists the stores where Silver Therapeutic Inc. has stores. And again, to say there's no relationship, the Silver Therapeutics Inc. website lists all of the Silver Therapeutic stores. So clearly, there is a relationship. If you look at where it lists the stores, it gives directions to come from another state to a Silver Therapeutic store. It is completely illegal, under federal law, to take marijuana across a state border. However, what Silver Therapeutics is doing is implicitly encouraging people to come buy from their New York store and take it to, or their Vermont store and take it to New Hampshire, or buy from their Berwick store and take it to New Hampshire. What does that say about the character of this company?
Thank you.
As I mentioned, I can't speak to the letter. I've not, or, excuse me, I can't speak to the ad. I've not seen it. I also can't speak to the letter that Ms. Snow submitted, because I don't have a copy of that. Thank you. I, I think the comment about the website is just a little bit beneath us to respond to. That's not at all what the website is doing. That's, I just think entirely improper to say that. I might have spoken earlier when I said there was no common ownership. What I meant to say is between the license holders, there is no common ownership. The license, each of the companies holds different licenses. Holds a cultivation license, holds a retail license, and would hold a retail license in Parsons Field, holds a retail license in a different town. There is a parent organization, there's a parent corporate entity. That is true. And Josh can correct me if I'm wrong, or affirm if I'm right. And so that is a fairly common setup in the state of Maine and other states and jurisdictions that allow cannabis, where you had different corporate entities hold different licenses, and occasionally had a parent entity in which the investors sit. There's nothing to hide about that. Happy to disclose that. Wired in the town's ordinance as a, as a condition of the application, but we're here telling you that tonight, so. Thank you.
My concern is the level of dishonesty. My concern is the level of dishonesty. We just heard that, oh, well, yeah, by the way, these are actually kind of related, but we didn't really think that it mattered. It does matter. And to say that the website, addressing the website, is beneath them? The website, if you look at the website, it very clearly gives, you can go to this state from this state and buy cannabis. That is against federal law. If this company is willing to implicitly encourage breaking federal law, that's a problem.
I'll just say, you know.
Yes.
Gambling is legal in one state, not in the other. Fireworks are legal in one state and not another. And we're not encouraging people to cross the border with it, but we're here, and if they want to purchase cannabis at our store, this is where we are. And that's, you know, just like fireworks or anything else. Some things are legal in one state and one side, and another, and that's the state's rights. So that's why I can say that.
Okay. Ms. Jane, you've been antsy there.
I have a lot. So anyway. We own the property at 24, 20, uh, 2224 Federal Road. As you know, in the past, we have a Chinese restaurant for years, and a bunch of businesses.
Yeah, you gotta speak out.
Okay, maybe step a little closer. So we have the, the building, which is, used to be called China Garden, the building. And the last few years of COVID, unfortunately, and it was closed. And we had a daycare there, and we just closed last fall. So we have the, actually Josh initially was looking at the property, decided to go with Scott. And 04047, Chris Kanaskey, was helping Scott do some remodeling, I guess. Decided, because of no heating system, the building was 100 years old. Certain thing, when he was remodeling, he find out more, so he scary. So he, my building become available, he come to me, approach me. These would have a steel frame, would have a two-hours egress for the barcode. It was a safe building, although it need a little bit cosmetic work. So that's how the whole thing, the competition openly just started. Like Tammy just said about the company, I don't quite understand by licensing. But what she pointed out is the, you got to be honest. We're from small town, and Chris, and my, the people who apply to my properties weren't honest. But we've been, been through this the whole year. For example, when we started planning board, I think it was November, December, we got approved, they got tabled. They didn't like it, they got all kinds of attorneys. So the selectman board apparently have an application, missing a word called condition use instead of a other one. So instead of a, they fixed the own mistake, and they let us suffer. So everybody had to go back again, to the planning board, and start this whole thing, whole race is start over, over again. So it's a lot of time, a lot of waste of money, so now certainly not ending. Even though in the beginning, we're in a race, because of the town made us 750 feet, only can have one. And then first, we were in the beginning of the race. Now, last night, we get tabled. Because the last selectman, month ago, we were told we need a one, called S R C C, South River Quarter, which I had this letter here, that was Tammy, was March 5th, 25th. I've been there many times, South River Quarter, asked if we needed it. They said, well, no, we don't need it, because we used to be restaurant, a daycare, for water, for storage, whatever is, we don't needed it. Until the last meeting, and the select board told us, because they had it, and we should have it. So here we go. Because that reason, I would, I spent a month's time to went through the South River Quarter, made our other letters, went to the meeting, take a beat from the attorneys. But we got granted with a little condition, the condition I met. Last night, we completed the application, now we get a table again, for whatever reason is. So there's no clear guideline. You tell us what to do. We give you all respect, but all honesties. We do what you're supposed to require to do. We did it all 100%. And we need something else.
Okay, Ms., excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Jane.
Okay.
Considering the other two applications tonight. I understand your frustration, but this is not the forum.
But I want to honestly tell the town, this is what happened regardless of all accounts. Am I allowed to speak that?
I'll give you a few more minutes.
For this one, for this one, we, the building, you know, this is Stanley Building, and this is David Gilcachra Building, I'm the next one. The, the Stanley Building had a fire in 1930s, and it had another fire, lost the third floor, and had another fire in 1958. And a 100 years building, you have a lot of hazard stuff. And clearly, there's not even parking. But as you saw, we've been there for 20-some years. Did you see any accident? Did you see any, any fire in our building? So there's apartments, for people that are who go to the store. So for that reason, we are of quality. Another reason I want to point it out, had to go through the public planning, planning board for this. And the planning board granted Stanley Building with the condition that they have a subject to be proved, has to be proved, installed, and complete by June 30th, and they did not meet the guideline. For that reason, they took this, this meeting shouldn't even be here today. You should like to go back, because that condition was not met. So this is clearly, it is something here. I just can't figure it out. I mean, we've been a business owner for this town many years. We pay taxes. We just want to be treated equally, and talk about honesty. I'm a landowner, and they are landowner too. You don't need to, I understand open competitions. I understand, I wanted to tell my client to open the store, they want to go, I understand that. But you don't lie. You don't just put a public newspaper and say, hey, let's reward us, because they apply this and this and that, we apply that. No, we apply exactly the same thing, like Tammy just said. Retail store, another retail store. Whatever you required, we are obviously met. Why had to be put on newspaper, lying? For what? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to say, I just need your confidence.
Okay. Okay, anybody that hasn't spoken? Joe?
Do I have to get up? I can talk.
No, you can speak live, Joe. Thank you.
I got a question. Who is or was running the plant that exists down there?
Say that again.
The old Chevrolet garage.
The people that are in there are the second public hearing tonight.
Yeah, the other hearing, yeah.
Yes.
It looks pretty inactive right now. I know there was, last, last summer, well, early in the summer or late spring last year, I drove into the bank up to the, outside window. Something smelled like a stump. I asked the woman, I said, you got a stump right there? She said, no, right over there. Wondered what I had.
Yep.
Real strong stunk, stinky smell.
Yep.
You know, why did they have that, why did it so much population? Probably out in the whole country somewhere.
Yeah, well, okay, the, the adult use, neither of these places are going to be growing. Okay?
I have another little comment.
Okay.
I have a hundred money to let me go on, and his wife has to have various medical problems. She went to the state, and she didn't fit to have, to grow her own, for her own use. She can have up to, up to five plants a year. She grows it herself and processes it herself. She doing all right.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what the numbers are, but you can grow your own in Maine.
She's got a license. She can grow her own, a lot of people have buy it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
I guess I've just really gotten confused over this whole thing. Now, these people are trying to go into the old building, correct?
Family building, yes.
Now, what is this 0, uh, 04047 now?
That's the one that wants to go in where the Chinese restaurant was.
Are they too close?
They are, only one of them can be licensed.
That's what I thought, 750 feet.
Yes, only one of them can be licensed.
So 4047, is that going to be restricted as far as growing and all this other stuff?
Application is just for adult sales.
All right.
Just wanted to clarify though, that it doesn't mean they can't make an application later, sorry, Tom Winter. They can make an application later to expand the business, but that would start the review process all over again, correct? Okay. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that they can change later, but it starts all over again. So we're not granting automatically, oh, if you have the pot store, that cannabis store, that you can automatically grow and process and test.
I hope not, because that's disgusting.
Yeah, well, you can't, can't, so that, that's all.
Yep.
One quick question. I know the Stanley Building was in need of a septic system.
You want to come up, Cliff?
Come on up. We'd like to see how long it's been.
The Stanley Building was in need of a septic system.
Can somebody address that?
I was there earlier this evening, and they installed something.
So there is a?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, this is my second time talking.
Can you extend up here?
Is there anybody in this room that knows who put this ad in the shop this guy?
Come on up, yeah.
Then anybody in this room know?
See, two hands in the back.
Two hands in the back. Is this all true?
Have you want to address that?
And it started with septic system, goes, how much did the town spend to undermine Peter Collins to lose that building in attorney fees? How much did it cost them?
Too much.
Too much, $30,000 to $40,000?
I honestly don't know, but that's probably.
Of course it's worth it. Of course it's worth it. Raise your hand if you want, Tom.
Yeah.
I'm Mark Mounds.
Mark, come on up. Mark?
Mark Mounds, I'm one of his partners at Keys or Commons, which owns the Stanley Building. Back to the comment about the cultivation, and the manufacturing, and the packaging, the other avenues of cannabis, that was previously presented by the opposing or the opponent applicant. They were going to do that, and then they later changed their application. So the ad that we put in references that, that they were going to do that originally. And then if you look back at the last select board meeting, the applicant reiterated that, and you can look at the, the, the video and the audio of that to verify that.
Okay. Scott?
My name is Scott Mounds. I'm another partner in the Stanley Building. A few things. Do you have a copy of that ad right there? So we did put this ad in. And what it's doing is it's comparing, it's asking you, would you rather have a 4,600 square foot cannabis grow, cultivation, and processing facility in, in the Chinese food restaurant? Or would you like to have just retail only in the Stanley Building? So it's asking you this, 4,600, it says cannabis-only store, or, and it says plainly there, what, what the alternative is, was the other company that was vying for Mrs. Jane's building? So, and if, I apologize if it's not clear. It was not our intent to be in any way, uh, untruthful. And, and it's just comparing Silver Therapeutics, our potential tenant, to the alternative applicant who's not here tonight, so we're not going to talk about that. But they.
They off.
How is that?
There's no indication that, that there's a competitor in this.
Well, it says, what do you want for Keys or Falls? A 1,475 square foot Silver Therapeutics cannabis retail only, or a 4,600 square foot 04047 company that clearly has stated several times on the record that they plan to grow, process, and cultivate in the Stanley, in the Chinese food restaurant. He said it many times through his applications, and on the record at the planning board, that this is the first step that he will take, is just to get the retail component license. Then he will follow up with growing.
Can we agree that the ad was misleading at best?
And I apologize for that. Another partner, partner wrote it. It, it did say Town of Parsons Field. That was advice from the shopping guide, so that they would know who this applies to. So they put it in there for us, on our behalf, Town of Parsons Field. This is a public hearing for the Town of Parsons Field. So it did make it look, because it says Town of Parsons Field, and we've gotten a drift, that, that was misleading in that respect, we apologize. But we had to put something on the ad that, that labeled what town it applied to, which was the Town of Parsons Field.
Okay. I, I really want to put this part of it to bed.
If I have one more comment?
If it has to do with Silver Therapeutics, yes.
I'm sorry, because I don't want to have to address this one more time. However, it has been very clear that there are no plans, current, or I don't know about the future, for cultivation, for manufacturing. There has never been any indication of a plan for a testing facility. The ad looks like, exactly like the ads that the, that the select board runs to announce public hearings. This is gaslighting, and it's dishonest.
Okay.
If I may just.
Okay. One more comment, then we're done with the ad.
Thank you. Josh and I are here, and we're happy to answer any questions about Silver Therapeutics' application. We're happy to answer any questions about ventilation, although it's not an issue, because everything comes packaged. We're happy to answer any questions about safety and security of the site. We're happy to answer any questions about traffic. We're happy to answer any questions about the other owners of Silver Therapeutics. We're happy to answer any questions about Silver Therapeutics' application. So please, if you've got any questions, there's good ones tonight. Please feel free to come up. Josh and I are happy to address them. Thank you.
Okay. Ed?
I'm just a little curious, these investors, where are they from? Who are they? Like, this is going to generate a lot of money, okay? And, no, I mean, at, at the, at the high end, you know? It's going to flow somewhere. It's going to flow out of this area. This area needs money, come into it, okay? They ran a Chinese restaurant, they did a good job. I mean, the money will be spent here if they do it. Where is this money going to go? I mean, the people throwing it, where is the money going to go?
The, the, the actual amount of money that's thrown like this.
The actual amount of money that's thrown like this makes it, the profit margin's pretty low, so most of it actually goes to HR and to staff. So most of it will stay local in the community, as long as it's
To clarify that, Silver Therapeutics, Inc. is funded by venture capitalists. The money goes eventually up to venture capitalists.
I mean, we Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, of course, everybody raises a little bit of money, but we're, we're four guys that wrote our deal on the back of a pizza plate. And, you know, we, uh, we're just, we're not some big firm with, you know, venture, like, a big venture capital firm or anything like that. Yeah, I can attest to that, so.
I think, to me, so I just say, the whole thing is about honesty. And I being here, I mean, normally I don't, people don't even know me, but we've been here twenty-four years running a business. We just work hard and also my applicants from local in this town as well, too. And again, another thing is, just concerns me, the publicity. They can run low to multi-use, they advertise, this is our first advertise. Every month, it was advertised three apartments before even, they have a holding tank. They advertise three apartments, stores, restaurant and therapeutics. I mean, is it safe? Anybody haven't been Stanley Building before? And everybody, I'm sure a lot of people have been to the China Garden, the restaurant before. So just consider about the safety, consider about the honesty, and see your decision.
Okay, anybody have any new comments?
I just have one, like, new question.
Okay, sure.
And it does relate, and it's always related.
Could you state your name, please?
Yes, Diane Whitworth.
Thank you. I think you speak loudly enough.
I, yes, I'm a teacher. I live on Federal Road. My question is really to understand ventilation, okay? So, and I understand that a retail store is different from a commercial grow, okay? I think I just want to be reassured that the planning board, the town officials really have a grasp on the ventilation issue and the differences thereof and what can be done for the citizens of the town. So I was at one of the initial meetings on twenty-two slash twenty-four Federal Road. And that's like two, I actually timed it two and a half minutes down the road by car going six, let's see, twenty-five from my home. And at that time, I was very concerned because I had been at the planning board meeting in which the gentleman was working with the folks. We're talking about not only having the retail store up, but the basement of the whole, both twenty-two and twenty-four down below become a commercial marijuana, marijuana grow, cannabis grow, hopefully, facility. So I understand the confusion and I was listening to it from the beginning. And so I think, you know, the folks that put the ad, maybe it caused more confusion from all of them. But I think if town people had been at the meeting and listened to what I heard, I mean, I was very surprised about it. And we already had one commercial marijuana grow facility. And the owner was working on a filtration ventilation system at the time. Because I went over there and I spoke with him and talked with him, he's had a plan and so forth. So I didn't want to see another commercial cannabis grow. And I still don't want to see that ever in the future for the town. So I just want to, I hope that as everyone evolves and they're understanding, and most importantly, that our representatives in the town evolve along with the legal system in Maine and everyone come to a common understanding. But I understand why the confusion happened here, because yet one of you, say, can you convince those? I'm going to have a quick, quick
You have no licensing? Yes, yeah. If I can just make a comment, our licensing agreement says no odor is allowed and we have zero tolerance for that, okay? So any facility that is licensed by us, if there are other operations there, they're all going to have to be no odor, period.
Somebody in back?
Hi, yes. Come on up.
I just moved to Florida recently and I've been in cannabis for ten years. And something I think that everyone might be missing is the fact that there are over five hundred retail cannabis facilities in the state of Maine, which means that there are more cannabis retail facilities in Maine than there are grocery stores, pharmacies, anything else. When you drive down that road, it's dead. The whole town is dead. We're missing out on an entire industry. I don't want to speak, the hard part about this is I don't want to say, I'm for Silver Therapeutics, I'm against O four O four, so I don't know either, other than I worked at a facility in Portland that was around the corner from Silver Therapeutics. People had nothing but good things to say about them, that there were no issues with them. I know that there was something that was brought up about some labeling issues. I can tell you, extremely common. The laws change very quickly. It's you may have product that's on the shelf that has an outdated label, that hasn't been updated. We need somebody that is in town that can bring cannabis to us, especially somebody that can, has the reach to be able to bring thirty to forty individual growers' products to this town so that people have an opportunity for variety, to be able to have access to cannabis. And wanting to build a business directly across the river from where that beautiful Stanley Building is, something needs to be in there. I want to see business in there and I'm in support of Silver Therapeutics.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I just have, I'm not going to stand back. I have one question. When did that go in about the ordinance for the smell?
It's in the select board licensing ordinance. It is not part of anything prior to that.
It doesn't include the one that's already there?
That's correct. It's now, okay, we're getting off topic. Why don't we wait until that one comes up next, okay? And we'll talk about it. All right, any other comments?
May I just address the odor, just very briefly?
Yep.
I can't speak to any other applicants. I can't speak to any other stores or situations. Retail stores, any of the applicants for only a retail store, all of the cannabis that comes into the store, it's packaged, sealed and counter-resistant packaging. Cannabis can't be consumed on the premises, so that regardless, the town's ordinance requires an applicant such as Silver Therapeutics to explain how it's going to absolutely mitigate any and all odor. And so on page forty-eight of our application, it's our operations plan, it speaks to all of the extra precautions we're going to take, even though there really is no odor at a retail store. Those precautions include maintaining air purifiers, keeping doors and windows closed, and maintaining a complaint log if there are complaints. And so I just wanted to, there's some confusion about odor and I get that. That's a major concern for folks that live nearby. Can't speak to anybody else. I can only speak to this application. There really is no odor. Regardless, we have controls in place. It's in the application to the town. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, quickly.
Yes, how does the town, if it manages any odor in the bed? I just started reading from the application. So what happens if you have a busy access that?
If it's a licensed facility, um
Forced by the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be enforced probably by the code enforcement officer. And it will be a warning followed by a cease and desist order if that isn't, if the situation isn't mitigated.
You got meaning in this, how does it not twenty-six?
No, we don't at this point. Nope. Pardon me? Yeah, understood. Okay, I think we'll close this part of the public hearing for Silver Therapeutics. And do we need a break or should we move right on? Okay, we'll move right on to Rejuvenate. And if I could have somebody give us a quick synopsis of what Rejuvenate is all about.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jill Cohen. I'm an attorney with Beryl in our Portland office. And I have the pleasure of representing Trevor Samborn. He is locally owned and operated Rejuvenate Cannabis Company with an application pending for a cannabis retail store. Do you want to tell them about yourself?
Yes, I'm Trevor Samborn, born and raised here in East Parsonsfield Village. I live in Cornish, forty-eight Harvest Hall in Cornish. I own three houses in Parsonsfield, actually, East Parsonsfield Village that I rent. And I obviously own former Walker Chevrolet building. And we call it the big marijuana there right now. And we're trying to get a retail store for adult use. Well, so the adult use has nothing to do, the store has nothing to do with it. You're talking about, you've been talking about the, that's the medical And we even said, like, I've been in steps of, you know, taking care of that. I've put in scrubbers and all kinds of things. If you have one last step to do this fall, but as you know, I mean, these cost a lot of money. I have to tear a room down, tear walls down the outside of the building and it's about a twenty-five-thousand-dollar project. And I'm waiting for a room to be done with harvesting in September and I do it before winter comes. And that's the last step to pretty much kill the smell. That's all I can say.
So we're happy to answer any questions about the retail store, the adult use retail store. You've heard a lot about it from the folks from Silver. Same thing, everything comes in packaged already. There's no processing going on in the retail store. So there won't, he's talked about the odor mitigation for his medical facility. We don't expect any additional odor liability based on adding the retail use because everything comes in prepackaged. The stores, like you've heard, are highly regulated. All doors and windows are closed, which helps mitigate odor. Very high-level security system and regulated not only by the town of Parsonsfield, but of course by the state. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Cliff.
I probably missed where this other shop is going to be open. Where will this second shop be open?
Trevor's?
At the Walker Chevrolet building. Oh, at the same, at the same location on where the Yeah, I know where the showroom was. Right, right, right.
Deb.
So we won't be growing anymore in there?
I'll have to license his medicines.
Pardon me?
He has to license his medicine.
But it's medical, it's separated completely.
Okay, but still, there's the smell. You can't turn it back because I'm tired, trying to go sit night. The smell comes in the
My idea, my idea, I'm addressing it, but you also need to look at your neighbors and their lawns. They're allowed to grow weed this time of year on lawns, so that's a factor. It's not just me and I'm not trying to protect myself, but that's the truth.
They can grow all they want. I don't care. That smell is potent. When you go down that road past your building, you can still smell. Go to bed, you still smell.
The bed not only coming from that location.
You've got an ice cream store, you still smell it. You can smell it all the way to you pass your building and returning to our road. That's when it stops. At night, during the day, you ready to be back. But at night, I might have my windows open. And the smell got so bad, you close the windows, turn the airway to clear the house up, but the smell is still there in the morning. So you're trying to tell me it's a small world without that smell.
Okay, all right. We don't need the back and forth. Yep.
I think he's addressed that issue and he's working on it and he's wanting to be getting that smell taken care of by the scrubbers he's putting in.
All I can say.
Walter.
Once again, I'm Walter Shaw. I live down on North Road. I'd like to reiterate again that the application's complete and he's jumped through the hoops. Trevor's been waiting a long time to, for this to happen. I urge the board to just approve his application, let him move forward. And if there's later, once he exists, there's an issue with the smell, the town does what the town's supposed to do to reiterate that. But Trevor is not the only smell in town. You drive down twenty-five in Cornish and at certain times of the year, all you smell is cow manure. Should we make the people on Highland Farms get rid of their cows and not do what they do? And again, it's because people are passionate about marijuana, but it's part of living in the country. Marijuana's been here for years and years and years before it ever became a legal issue. Parsonsfield was, you know, kind of a local place. All the hippies came up here to run away from civilization. We've been growing for years. The smell's been there forever. And again, nobody says boo about the cows because, well, the cows are politically correct. And people are passionate about marijuana. So again, I just urge the town to follow the rules that we voted in to the best of their ability and let's just move on. And please don't continue to get bullied by the lawyers from Silver Therapeutics.
All right. Yeah.
Just to address the issue of cows. Every year I love to smell those cows because I know that up here they're producing milk for all the people to be drinking the milk and the good milk. And I love watching the cornfield grow and all that. That smell from the cows, cow manure, is probably two-day talks, maybe three. It's over and done with, okay? Listen, our, the commercial marijuana grow facility has been a topic that touched my heart because I'm like three house homestand. Born and raised in this area, two miles from the house I currently live in. Married my husband at the local church. We've got like, I don't know, four or five churches along that, you know, six, seven mile stretch there. I taught school, told them in Cornish, Parsonsfield Quarter, South Fire, for thirty-nine and a half years. I, people say, well, that's a disadvantage to living in Keith Falls Village. I'd like to live in rural Parsonsfield, for example. Yeah, I understand that. But we were a home that lots of kids could come to from that were on the outskirts when the ball games going on. And they could come stay at the house and that kind of thing. So we were a village home. We were very happy to be here. My family, it's a family that was around there for decades. Walter's discount store, Hyatt third in Keith Falls, Walter's furniture warehouse and so forth. So we're family, small business oriented. And we understand the importance of that to people and giving jobs to those in the community. When walkers garage and facility was sold, and I knew that was going to happen, it was really devastating. And the first time I smelled the odor, it, I thought like, I guess we're never going to smell fresh air again. I stepped outside. I will say that I've been down, I've visited with Trevor. I've been in the facility. I've had discussions with him. He's worked on, he listened to my concerns about the odor. He began, I guess you call it in legal terms, an odor mitigation plan. He talked about what I was observing to be, you know, filtration system and what he could do to improve it. He's told me he has plans to improve it, that he has these steps in place. He had that facility. I think it's not going anyplace. Cannabis does help with medical problems. And for those of us that deal with the odor issue, all we ask is that, please, keep on working with it. I really have, I must say, I have good faith in Trevor. You know, when I shook his hand, I believe, I believe in that handshake. And I believe he will continue. And, but as far as allowing another commercial grow in the region, this whole area, we don't have it in any this whole area, that we don't have it in any village setting, again. I hope that people can turn out and understand that, and the one we have can come to terms. I know that it's very expensive. I've even known someone else who's been used to, and he talks about that really great expense it is to do this installation online. But, as citizens, taxpayers here of our life, we deserve to have the cleanest here that we can for the facility we have, and I believe we should stop any more commercial grow.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Anyone else? Jeff?
Since I mentioned smell, the market is on alert right now due to the forest fires in Canada. So, smell can come from anywhere.
True. Yes.
There's bad air quality everywhere. Right now, it's coming from Canada. I'm saying we should break ties to Canada.
Smell's a little different than what I'm smelling.
You should also keep in mind that smoke, there's haze, traps, stuff trying to escape. Hopefully, we won't have fires every year for the next few decades.
All right, any other comments? Yep, Joe?
I just wanted to say, I agree with this woman here, that smell of a farm don't bother me. I was born in 1937, I've lived here ever since, on a farm. Had to grow up on a farm, and I had to work in a farm. Been to the school.
Yeah.
Sometimes the teacher didn't like it. The other kids, they were all farm kids. They didn't like it. We didn't raise milk cows, we had beef animals, our own beef. So we had one or two milk cows, just our own milk.
Can I just say something, too, that the State of Maine has a Right to Farm Act that protects farmers regarding smell?
I'm kind of upset that we seem to be losing out rural areas. There's a lot of houses in it. I don't know what you can do about that.
Another conversation.
It bothered me to see how the open land being used up for housing.
Yep. All right, anybody else?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay. Trevor, in your application, your hours of operation state, 10 to 8, seven days a week. But our licensing ordinance states it has to be Monday through Saturday.
Seven days a week?
No. Monday through Saturday. Yep. Just so you know that, okay? Sure. I have one more question for the Mouse Brothers. Is your septic system, has it been signed off by an LPI?
We got caught in that transition code enforcement. Eric Frye came over and inspected it the day that it was supposed to be completed. He gave a sign up on that, so we have a copy of that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, at this point, I guess we'll close the public hearing. I thank you all for coming. We're, oh, I'm sorry.
Kim, do you have anything that you want to add or say?
I guess my only question is for Silver Therapeutics. And that's that there's a specification sheet for an air purifier in the application? Is that the one that's actually been installed, or will be installed, in the building? Or what's the purpose of that?
Yeah, we specified that, and I believe that's the one we're going to put. And some similar.
They're portable air filters, I think, is what you've sent us?
Yeah, it's a pretty large, robust unit.
For Trevor, do you have something similar to give the Select Board?
Okay, go ahead.
No, just in terms of odor and ventilation, like, what, you know, more specifically, what you're doing in terms of what you're using?
I'll use them.
Yes.
For the retail, yeah.
Not using?
Well, we're getting a little deeper than we need to here, but our ordinance, our licensing ordinance says that the odor has to be no odor at the lot lot. So if you've got other things creating odor on that lot, that's a problem. Okay.
Yeah. It's going to be around September when it gets.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Again, thank you for coming, folks, and stay tuned.
One more question. Chris Foster of 60 Pratt Road. Where does it go from here, with you guys, and the two?
It goes to the Select Board. We go through the licensing ordinance, item by item.
Yeah.
And if we have questions, for instance, odor mitigation, then we get those answers from the applicants. And at some point, satisfied that we have all the answers, whether they're to our liking or not, and we make a decision.
So you, this board makes the decision?
Yes.
We have 45 days to do that.
Yeah.
As of today?
Yeah.
Yes.
As of the end of this hearing. Yep.
Thank you.
And this hearing is ended. Come on, folks.
But I do need to point out that no application has been made yet, because the conditional use permits have not been issued.
Yeah, we're aware.
We're aware.
Thank you. Okay, that's it, folks, thank you.
I had no way of getting back in the house.
Good, I'm glad, because there's a right to farm and a right to agriculture. Okay, good.
I was using a smell.
Big shit that smells over in Cornish. Right, right, right.
It's part of where we live. So I was not, I want to think, did I anti-agriculture, or did anybody do what they do?
Well, you need, we need a county lawyer, we need a land use lawyer, we need a... General counsel, psychiatrist.